Okay, good evening. Welcome to the July 29th, 2025 City of West Point work session. I'd like to call the work session to order and begin by reviewing the agenda. Tonight we'll have public comment. In new business, we have an introduction of new employees. We have surplus city equipment for sale. There's an update on the West Point Comprehensive Plan. We have the weather warning upgrade. We have meter reading improvements. And we have the SPOS 5 soccer field discussion. So those are the items on the agenda this evening. Do you have a motion to approve the agenda? Have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Um.
Any opposed? Is there anyone here that would like to make public comment tonight? Seeing now, I'm gonna skip over that and we'll go straight into new business. So we'll start with the introduction of new employees. I have Dennis Dutton and Chief Staley to introduce, so... Go ahead Dennis, you're on the list first.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to introduce our new employee. She is our Community Development Program Administrator. She'll be looking over the cares and the Youth Center for us. She comes from Valley, Alabama, and she is a graduate of Point University. Came highly recommended by a lot of the people that put in. She's a mother, two kids off in college, so she's gonna... But she's taking the ground running by cleaning up, getting everything prepared over there. She's been a whirlwind. Does, so... But, uh... Anything you'd like to...
Introduce yourself.
Mayor Tramell.
Yes.
I'm Councilman. Again, my name is Talonda Robinson. I am the newly hired Community Development Program Administrator. So I will be bringing new ideas by way of the care center and city. I, um, at my core, believe in the power of our youth. Their creativity, their, um... Their ability to shape our future. I am very, very excited to, um, join you guys, the, the community. I'm very excited about that. And I look forward to working with you guys. If there's anything I can do for you, like if you have any kids, I'll take them. Thank you so much for having me tonight. And if you're in it, again, if you need anything, I can help you with anything, just let me know.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're actually gonna do introduce a new employee tonight. We have some promotions as well tonight. We wanted to use newly promoted staff. First, I wanna start off with Lieutenant Zach Smith. Uh, Zach's been with the city since 2017. He has 12 years public safety experience. Eight, eight of that being with the city. He was promoted to Sergeant September of '21. And then he was just recently, July of '25, promoted to Lieutenant. So he'll be one of my shift leaders. He's a firefighter, paramedic, training instructor, brings several other certifications along with it. So just help us congratulate him on his... So next promotion we have is Sergeant Ricky Webster. From the back row here. He's a firefighter, paramedic. He has 21 years of public safety experience in Georgia and Florida. He started in Clayton County. He's been with the department since July of '24. He was promoted to Sergeant July of '25. He is also one of the instructors with the paramedic school with Faithful Guarding that the city is sponsoring here in West Point. So he is one of the leading instructors with that. So glad to have him part of the team and look forward to what both of these are gonna bring to the department and help the department grow. New employee I'm bringing on is Christopher Smith. He, uh, he joined the department in June of '25. He's a Mercy Medical Technician. He's currently enrolled in paramedic school. He will be attending the Georgia Fire Academy in January of '26 to receive his fire certifications. He's retired law enforcement. Don't hold that against him. 26 years' experience in law enforcement in Florida. Transitioned to Fire EMS in 2023 in Florida and joined us in '24. We're excited about having him here and continue to grow the department.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
It's not a mandatory thing to have a mustache and work for West Point.
You wanna go aboard, I'll get you a car.
Hey, in 15 seconds or so, difference between an EMT and a paramedic?
It's just the level of advanced certifications. The EMT is a basic level of training. The paramedic's more advanced for the use of medications, airway management, just a lot different. It's just the steps in training. It goes EMT, MTA, and then your paramedic level. You can go past that to critical carrier and different levels, but how we go is the paramedic level here.
Thank you.
Do they both respond to a call at the same time, the paramedic and the EMT?
Normally, our trucks are staffed with a paramedic and an EMT or ENTA. We have a advanced life support on each truck, so we have a paramedic level and then normally a basic level. We'd love to get back to the days we once were where we had a dual paramedic truck. So we had two advanced people on the truck, but, uh, staffing is... Public safety is a dying breed. It's hard to find that... People that wanna do that anymore, so it's a struggle to find employees, but that's what we're striving for.
Okay, well, let's move on to surplus city equipment. Kristen, what you selling today?
I'm gonna bring to you a 20, a 2008 John Deere excavator. It's no longer working. It's a little bit beat up. We're selling it for parts on Doug Deals. It will be on the agenda for, for a whole, after the council meeting.
Any questions, Council? All right, then we'll move on to the update on the West Point Comprehensive Plan. Dennis, come back up and tell us about that.
Thank you. You do have in your packet where we are on the comp plan. We completed four meetings. First was a SWOT analysis. We've had pretty good participation in the, uh, the turnouts there. Megan also was one of the, uh, committee members as Chief. Staley and Roderick, and, uh, so we've got some of the community facilities lined up on that. First thing we did was SWOT, which of course is the street strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats. Some of those examples were, I have, uh... We dealt with transportation issues and those needs. One of the prime things that came up, I'm not gonna go into all of them, but, uh, basically, the school traffic, as, as any place else has, the, the ridership and the walk to school. Concerns about that, safety, streets, of course. Other things, uh, concerns about federal and state highway challenges to address. And then future maybe would be sidewalk in Harris County line. Some of the opportunities were, of course, the, um, the continuation of the redevelopment of 10th Street that was brought up significantly. One thing to take out of that, I know Megan's been working on that. She's been a champion for that. The idea is, some of our board members also brought up the point that we're growing. It, it does, you're seeing some of the growth here, but they want it in a smart growth. So, um, you know, we're at that point where we don't just need haphazard growth. So they're willing to put that forward on our, uh, goals and objectives. We're still working on the housing. That seems to be another issue. And community facilities, of course, is, as we grow, there's gonna be a more need for water and sewer, but it's also gonna be taxing our fire department and our police department. So those are things to consider. Not that we're against that, but just, just to know that's something that the committee did bring up. And finally, of course, broadband was brought up. That's, I think, we're pretty well covered on that. In fact, the counties are one that suffers on that. So the next steps that we've got right now is we're completing a survey, and some of you may have seen the surveys that have gone out. The last count that I got, and it should be in there, I think it's 78 or 79 is what was told to me on the, on the, uh, number of surveys filled out. We will have a public meeting. There'll be one more public meeting for the public, which they're proposing somewhere in August, maybe August 26th. We'll figure out where that meeting will be, and that will be advertised for more of the general public to come in. We'll have those surveys that they can fill it out and put their, uh, points in there. Also, there will be a draft of that comp plan. It's gonna be the next thing that we'll look at. And also the character area maps, or the future land use map. You, you may have seen those character area maps. DCA has changed some of those characteristics. And they've added, um, a few more. So we have a couple of areas that we're probably looking at, probably regional towards interstate area where we have kind of a mixed use in that area. Probably need to define that. Also, some of the corridors, not only along the 10th Street corridor, we also wanna look for protective corridor around 29. That's gonna be another area that we wanna look at for, uh, protect, protection in. But other than that, we're, we're well on our way. And we'll look for your input on any of the surveys or any comments that you have. Hopefully, by September 8th, we will have the public hearing back to you to approve a resolution, so sent off to the Department of Community Affairs for their final review. So that's where we are on that. Questions?
I don't think we have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we need the weather warning upgrade. Chief Staley.
We have currently did a weather system upgrade to our weather siren system in the county. The previous weather sirens system that we have was, best we can figure, was installed in the mid to late 90s. It was controlled by Troup County AMA and Troup County 911 on the activation. What point did have the option where we could activate the weather sirens if needed? To the best we can, our records, we've only activated it one time since installation, and that was when the tornado hit Northwest Point a couple of years ago. In the past, what we've noticed is with the activation of the weather sirens, Troup County 911 received a notification to activate from the National Weather Service in Peachtree City. By the time they received it, activated the warnings, due to our geographic location and the normal travel path of the tornadoes and storms that come through, by the time the sirens are activated, it's already passed us. I hear that from everybody. We all set the sirens off and it was already passed us. It was a long hang for it. We heard a siren. So this new system, basically what it will do, it, uh, it will ensure more rapid notification, early notification for the citizens of West Point to take shelter, to take, to be ready for. We currently have five sirens located in the city. We keep the maintenance on those, keep those up, keep them serviced. The new service that we've established, it's called RapidWarn. It's a remote monitoring of the National Weather Service, both Peachtree City and Birmingham. Anytime we fall, one of our sirens, we have the GPS coordinate on one of the map. Anytime one of our fire and salt falls into the polygon of the warned area, all of our sirens will be activated by the National Weather Service in RapidWarn. Instead of going through the steps, if we fall into that polygon, our sirens will be automatically activated. Not just the siren that's in the polygon, all of them will be activated in the city for notification. Part of this, when I set it up, instead of just looking at Peachtree City, because we're in Georgia, who is our na, our National Weather Service office, I also included Lee County, Chambers, Randolph County, Harris County as well. So we watch the weather and all of those. So if we have something that's in Randolph coming our way, we'd come on the radar and we start watching it coming toward us. And so if it falls in one of our sirens area, they'll be activated. Once the sirens are activated, we will, there will be an email notification sent out to all the city of West Point, uh, directors, department heads, as well as, uh, essential employees, employees of the city and strategic partners located within the city and the county, to include Troup 911 and Troup County AMA. We've included, uh, Point, Point University in that as well, the Corps of Engineers Office, some of our Kia contacts, just so we can get that notification out at a more rapid pace, so people can have a little safer environment. Currently, everybody will get an email once it is the sirens activated. If we just have a severe thunderstorm warning or something like that, there will be a notification sent out to all department directors and strategic partners. Hey, we've got a severe thunderstorm warning. We've got a flash flood warning. We've got a severe winter storm warning. We will have a notification of that. I'm currently in the process of setting up a link that will automatically post to the city Facebook pages. So that'll be another source of getting it out to everyone that whenever that siren is activated or a warning is posted, it will automatically post to the city pages. Just, uh, to help notify the citizens earlier as well. The RapidWarn system, well, currently, currently, we run a daily test on the sirens to make sure everything's reporting back like it should. They will take over all of this. They will do the daily test, send us an email, what passed, what failed. They will do the monthly test that we're so used to on Wednesdays at noon, uh, first Wednesday of the month at noon. They will take that over, uh, as well. We do have the option to cut it off on that Wednesday if we have inclement weather in the area, so we don't confuse people. After that is done, if there is an error in one of the daily test or the monthly test, department, uh, in the fire department, police department, we're notified of the test results if something failed. It also sends a notification to Metropolitan Communications, who manages our weather sirens. Hey, we've got an issue, so they can get somebody in right in here to fix them. And this is all in an effort to increase that notification time or decrease that notification time of the citizens to, uh, give as much notice and alert and warning as possible. That's what happened when the tornado came through Northwest Point. It was picked up on radar, we found out from Birmingham. Birmingham and Peachtree City didn't communicate, so it was never activated. So we're hoping by communicating with Birmingham and Peachtree City that we're gonna get a little earlier notification for the city. We're also looking at possibly next budget year, add two more sirens, bring the total to seven for the city to incorporate all of our areas since we've drawn since the initial install. One being up around the Kia plant, Kia Boulevard for those residential developments up there, and another one in the Northwest Harris area of Harris Creek, out that way. Any question?
Any questions?
Thank you.
Do the sirens have a battery backup that powers out?
They do. They have a battery backup on them. We have to have them, and they have a charger on as well that maintains them. They come out once a year, do a load test on them. They all have, uh, UHF radios on them that we transmit off of. Thank you.
Next, we have the meter reading improvements with Mr. Sammy Edman.
How are y'all?
Good. How are you, Doc?
After what, 18, 24 months, we're finally getting ready to start putting some of the meter reading online. Took a while. We still do it like dinosaurs. We still stop everybody we have, two, three days a month, and we'll go out and walk and read the meters. I don't know anybody else that's still doing that, and now we're finally moving away from it, so... We worked with Kendall Supply, Kevin Purcell. He's an expert. If you have any questions, please direct them to him or either Ted or Kristen, 'cause they can actually pretty much, most of what I can. We got the contract signed, got everything in place. The equipment is now mounted on the water tank here. It's up and running. Kevin and his crew still doing some tweaking on the communications back and forth. We should start, we were hoping to start it this month on metering, but it's, it'll be next month now. Which we changed out one route. We have 13 routes. We're currently changing out two more, so we'll change those out. Unless y'all have a million, a little over a million dollars to throw at us and wanna just change all the meters, Kevin and like that. It's gonna be a, a, a change. It'll give Kristen and her ladies a lot of, a lot of capabilities from their computers. They'll be able to talk to the meters real time, operate the meters real time, do what they need to do. I'm sure Kevin would, would try to sell you on some, some, some things, some portals for the customers, but I don't think Mr. Plon is ready for that yet.
Just your power, right?
No, power, gas, and water. It's a census system. Kendall Supply reps census in Georgia, so we're going through them. It's, it's really good. Everybody in the, in the industry's pretty much gone to census. Our stuff actually works together. I, I'll be surprised if we don't somehow mesh with, with, uh, Hogansville or maybe Lynette at some point. I know we're, we're meshed in with McGrange, and that gives us both a, a much broader coverage area for a lot cheaper price on these base stations. They're pretty expensive. It's been a long process, but we're, we're finally getting there. Kevin and his crew's going through the, the bridges between the, the building software and the census reading now. They're building all that. Should have it up and running very soon.
Electric's in the, in the wall pack, the, uh, meter, electric's in the meter. They're changing out the water meter.
The, the radio goes on top of the water.
So you keep the same water meter, just, you have to change the water meter and it's got a radio on it? Gas, what do you have to do to that?
There's a device that goes in between, the radio goes in between the meter and the meter dial. And...
So you're, you keep it all at the same, it's just adding their product to it?
Yep.
Okay.
Get it all in programmed. It'll go straight, which you, you start seeing them on, on the computer almost instantly as soon as one's programmed.
How long do we expect it to take before everybody's gonna...
Depends on money. Kevin can have...
Well, yeah, but I mean...
Kevin can have any meters here in six months.
How many are you doing right now? You're gonna do when you start off?
We've got about, right at 6,000 meters total, and we've done... How many have we done, Karen?
Probably a...
Probably 100 each. We've got one single route up. We're gonna get it up and we're gonna lead it and practice with it and get it working, right? And then we've got other ones that we're changing right now.
Once we get everything integrated, we do building system and did the first test. We sit down with Sammy and kind of, you know, line everything out. Census makes their, Census is the only manufacturer that makes water, gas, and electric in-house as a manufacturer. Everybody else makes one or the other, but they don't make all three. So if that, if that's the benefit, you're on the census, same meter, same technology, same brand, it's in warrant.
Any, any way to monitor if you, you know, somebody's really, you know, had a toilet running for six days straight?
Yes.
So once we get the first 100 and we get it integrated, we do building system, we'll set up those reports. At the end of the day, when you're fully deployed, you'll do a consumption analysis for commercial class customers. You'll do a consumption analysis for residential. When we first turned it on, for example, in Locust Grove, three years ago, I did 24, uh, I did 10 gallons for 48 hours, and there was a list this long for 5,000 people. So we finally got it to 75 gallons for 72 hours to get down to a list of 25 people. And then we said, go work these 25 people, and then we'll start inching it down. So once we turn it on, we'll find out what's the sweet spot for your customer base and then work from there. And then for the customer portal, you're an ENCODE customer. So they offer a very inexpensive customer portal through your ENCODE. And so it's a single sign-on. So if somebody's signed on to pay their bill, they could then sign up to the customer portal. So I, I can get your staff in touch with Tanny Bates, who's in Georgia, rep for ENCODE, get you some cost analysis. That wouldn't come through us. We would just mitigate everything, set it up.
It'd be a way for somebody to say, hey, in the last 72 hours, I've used 500 gallons of water.
Yeah, they're a paid customer for you.
Yeah.
And then they could put their, you know, email address in and then go on and say, you know, text me or email me every time I use over 100 gallons or I spend over $50, or whatever parameter they want to notify them, then that would be the notification they would get.
And they would know they're using that.
Forget to leave the garden hose on.
Yeah, the meters are reading every hour.
Yeah.
Uploaded to the cloud. And it's just a constant communication between, between census and, and ENCODE.
That'd be great.
Hey, would this affect our meter readers?
Well, no, we, we just use our current employees.
We don't have dedicated...
Everything in here. I think it'd be a lot of happy people.
No doubt. I'd be number one. Takes a lot of air out of the computer. Don't really get it.
All right, any other, any questions? I guess not. Finally, then, SPOS 5 soccer field, was that?
Yes, sir. Just wanna cover a few things on SPOS 5 and talk about the soccer field project that we've been, um, working on for a while. But this is Troup County SPOS 5. You know, currently, we're collecting SPOS 6. So SPOS 5 has already collected, um, the, uh... For that SPOS, we're looking at a total of $5 million. We collected a little bit more than $5 million. In that, we had roads and sidewalks of $2 million. We have spent the $2 million for roads and sidewalks. That goes all the way back to the MOK and 10th Street intersection. We bought a loader truck, um, sidewalk project, paving project. So we, we've spent, uh, the roads and sidewalks piece. In the SPOS, we had, for West Point, we had 1.5 million for recreation. So that was our total, $2 million for streets and sidewalks, 1.5 million for recreation. That was the total SPOS that we had. So three and a half million. And then Troup County, um, put in towards their recreation program, $1.5 million, and we supported that project with $1.5. So a total of $3 million for recreation. So what I wanna talk to you about is, number one, soccer field. We are currently advertising that project, and the bid deadline is August, uh, 21st. So we'll be bringing that to you in September, hopefully for approval, to get the grading portion of that project. We'll upgrade the parking area. Then we'll follow up with, um, lighting, uh, fencing, and then crack some of it. And Mike's gonna handle those third vendors that we, that Troup County's worked with or other vendors. We'll do those as individual projects instead of putting it all in one bid, and then we'll get better pricing. So we're looking at, I think, my estimate, about $600,000 to do what we need to do on soccer field. Other capital outlay, park improvements, um, playground improvements, K9 park, fields, lights, parking, et cetera. We're gonna set aside $400,000 for that out of this 3 million that we have remaining in SPOS 5. Then River Park, bank stabilization improvements, $500,000. And then a project that we've talked about for quite some time, set aside $1.5 million for an aquatic project. That's yet to be determined what that's gonna look like. But that's, uh, what we set aside. I did not add this to the agenda for, um, the next meeting to approve, but I think it would be a good idea. I have to, any comments you all wanna talk through? Any portions of that budget for SPOS?
Anybody have any questions regarding that? No questions? All right. Well, that's all the items on our agenda for tonight. The only thing we have on the agenda for the business meeting for August 11th is the surplus city equipment.
Could we add that budget for recreation for Splosh Five?
Sure. Anybody okay with that?
We'll set that money aside for sure.
Okay. Yeah, let's do it. We need something else on the agenda. I'm looking to set another, any short record. Okay. All right. Announcements. I know we've got the National Night Out coming up, August 5th, Tuesday, August 5th, with the police department. And that'll be in Hogsfield, same as every, same as every time. Do you mind what time it starts? I don't have a time. 5:30 to 7:30, I just found it. So Tuesday, August 5th, from 5:30 to 7:30, National Night Out. Everybody come out and support our police department over at the park over here next to Givens. Do you have something?
Yeah, I have two things. I really like the kayaks with the water, and I know you're probably watering those every day, and thank you for.
Well, they're dead, but they made it several months. But we're going to do a fall planning, you know, so, but we've got to remove the current.
Well, they were still a while.
They're still a little bit, they might have a little.
I thought they looked really, really good. I had something else. Oh, Kevin, thank you for the, the work you did this summer on the pool transportation. I heard it was a pretty good success. I appreciate your devotion to that. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Parker, Joe, Joe had called me earlier about that, and so.
I looked all over for lifeguards, but I couldn't find any. Kevin just went to the man.
All right, that's everything we got through this evening. I need a motion to adjourn.
Probably adjourn.
Thank you, Joe, as always, making his motion to adjourn. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
You have a second? All in favor? Any applause? Almost second. All right, good night, everybody.